... keep in our thoughts and prayer that our troops, law enforcement, law, first responders always return home safe. Thank you. What?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the republic which sustains, our nation under God, with equal liberty and justice for all.
And of course, we're doing some quick public meetings on notice of this public meeting in the Republican House, convening our little papers, including on the middle six county website, as well as on the bulletin board in the Middlesex County Administration Building, it's forty-eight hours in the middle of this meeting, but something I can do in this first meeting.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ashwin Barber, you.
Here.
County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Hopple.
Here.
County Commissioner McCollum. County Commissioner Nara. County Commissioner Tamara.
Here.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Here, keeping your recognitions.
Yes, um, first, a proclamation for sexual assault awareness month in December twenty twenty-four, next is proclaim, proclaim April seventh to the thirteenth twenty twenty-four as National Library Week in Middlesex County, next is proclaiming April twenty twenty-four as prevent child abuse awareness month in Middlesex County, and next proclaim April twenty twenty-four alcohol awareness month in Middlesex County.
So a motion to adopt, if that's keeping your recognitions.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ashwin Barber.
Yes.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny.
Yes.
County Commissioner Hopple.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes.
Okay, we have the proclamation for the sexual assault awareness month. Anyone here for them?
Yes.
Yep, okay, Commissioner Tamara.
Come on up. Can't do this all. We're at Sexual Awareness Month, and the observation of Denim Day draw attention to the fact that sexual violence, including sexual assault, sexual harassment, and sexual abuse is widespread. Statistics indicate that every sixty-eight seconds, someone is sexually assaulted in the USA, and every nine minutes, the victim is a child. With a commitment, we can reduce sexual violence in Middlesex County by raising awareness, cultivating healthy individuals, relationships, spaces, and communities, challenging all forms of oppression, increasing all forms of equity, and supporting survivors and holding predators of violence accountable. Throughout the month of April, Middlesex County supports the efforts of national, state, and local partners, as well as encourages every citizen to understand the realities and root of causes of sexual violence, support survivors, survivors in culturally sophisticated ways, in joint confession efforts, and promote the observation of Denim Day on Wednesday, April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, joining advocates and support service programs and urge, and urge all community members to help sexual violence. You know, and that, this is a very strong message, and it has to be, it has to be really, you know, put out there, and we really have to, you know, help our, any victims who was with sexual assault. You know, thank you for being here, you may.
I'm grateful.
I might say a few words.
Thank you.
Good evening. On behalf of the Caritas Program, it's Holy Family Parish here in New Brunswick, like to thank the Commissioners, as well as the Center for Empowerment, for this recognition of Denim Day and Sexual Assault Awareness Month. This year's theme is building connected communities, and it's especially relevant, given our experience and unique work. Holy Family Parish has a history of serving immigrant communities here in New Brunswick for almost a hundred and fifty years, and every week around a thousand people gather at our Sacred Heart, Saint Joseph and Saint Laiswell sites to worship in English, Spanish, Hungarian, and Polish. Places of worship are often considered to be the closest places to home for many immigrants, a place where individuals and families feel that they belong, and which serve a critical role in weaving and maintaining the rich and vibrant fabric of the community. In fact, Pope Francis called the church to be like a field hospital, with the ability to heal wounds and to warm the hearts of the faithful. As such, the Caritas Program is rooted in Holy Family Parish, and aims to respond to basic human needs and provide opportunities for physical and emotional healing and wellness using a trauma-informed approach. Our services include case management, counseling, support, and cyclic educational groups, holistic community events, and partnerships with local organizations. One of those organizations is precisely the Center for Empowerment, recognizing that far too many people in our community have survived or been closely impacted by sexual violence. Last summer, the Center for Empowerment led a seven-week dialectical behavior therapy, or D B two skills group, in collaboration with the Caritas Program. On a professional level, the experience was inspiring to learn from C F V about concrete tools to help alleviate the symptoms of painful life trauma. On a community level, we were heartened to see the participants develop feelings of safety between members and in our setting. Participants continuously pointed out the importance of this collaboration for developing trust and feeling supported by our community. Some noted this with happy surprise, and we know that there's still so much work to be done to ensure that our community is safe, inclusive, and equitable. May we all work hard to build an environment where everyone is being honored and respected. By doing so, we'll reduce the likelihood of sexual abuse and continue to see healing occur, as residents increasingly find their own voices, wanting to share with each other their strengths and supports. A connected community is a safer community. Thank you.
Libraries play an important role in our society, they give opportunities for everyone to go and coexist with each other. There's so much information and services, a lot of people might have thought that once the computer age started, that libraries were going to become an extinct thing, and quite the contrary, they're still an important role in our society. They create civic engagement, and, and there's so much things that are shared at, at the libraries, and so much information, and it's able to provide successful careers for so many people and lifestyles. So on behalf of Board of County Commissioners, I want to thank all those that work in libraries, and I even remember my first librarian's name from when I was a little kid in Core Red, but I just want to say thank you for your hard work and dedication. Would you like to say something?
I guess I'm old enough that I have seen libraries move from relatively quiet bookplaces to being on the cutting edge of connecting people, information, and knowledge. And by the way, still happily handing out books to people who like to read that book. So thank you to, to the Commissioners, and may you all use your local libraries. Middlesex County has a lot of very, very good libraries.
All right, we have correspondents.
The ring chair has been provided with a list of correspondents, if you'd rather pick one of the four, since it's our last meeting, this correspondence will be kept on file, and we want this as a place for reference.
Motion to accept the vote.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Propose. Motion to approve.
The county of March twenty-third, we have the meeting, we need to agree to.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ashwin Barber.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny.
Yes.
County Commissioner Hopple.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara. County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes. Okay, we have ordinances, introduction and first reading, we have the, the party ordinance number four seventy-four.
Bond ordinance number four seventy-four, bond ordinance providing for the undertaking of fiscal year twenty twenty-five capital investments at and for certain facilities of Middlesex College, so being with the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriating three million, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars, therefore, authorizing the issuance of three million, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-six bond ordinance of the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, for financing such appropriation, the principal of the interest on the aggregate principal amount, which will be encyclo- to state date, pursuant to chapter twelve of the laws of New Jersey of nineteen seventy-one, and authorizing publication thereof, authorizing publication to be held on thirty April eighteen, twenty twenty-four, at six thirty P M, and publication thereof.
So a motion to approve ordinance number four seventy-four, first reading.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ashwin Barber.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny.
Yes.
County Commissioner Hopple.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes. Okay, we have the ordinance number four seventy-five.
Bond ordinance number four seventy-five, bond ordinance providing for the undertaking of various capital investments at and for certain facilities of Middlesex College, located within the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriating three million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, therefore, authorizing the issuance of two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar bond ordinance, the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, for financing such appropriation, and authorizing public hearings, involving seventeen citizens, twenty twenty-four, and three, probably more.
So a motion to approve ordinance four seventy-five, first reading.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ashwin Barber.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny.
Yes.
County Commissioner Hopple.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes. Party ordinance number four seventy-six.
Bond ordinance number four seventy-six, bond ordinance providing for the various improvements in the Middlesex County Baptist School, in and by the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriating six million, five hundred thousand dollars, therefore, authorizing the issuance of six million, one hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars bond ordinance, the county, to finance as part, finance as part of the cost thereof, and further authorizing the public hearings to be held, April eighteen, twenty twenty-four, at six thirty P M, and authorizing the publication thereof.
So a motion to approve ordinance number four seventy-six, on first reading.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ashwin Barber.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny.
Yes.
County Commissioner Hopple.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes. Court will be ordinance number four seventy-seven.
Ordinance number four seventy-seven, bond ordinance providing for the design and construction of the new Baptist School on the premises of Middlesex College, in and by the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriating forty-seven million dollars, therefore, authorizing the issuance of forty-four million, seven hundred and sixty-one, nine hundred dollars bond ordinance, the county, to finance part of the cost thereof, and further authorizing the public hearings, we have officially, in twenty twenty-four, at six thirty P M, and authorizing the publication thereof.
So a motion to approve ordinance number four seventy-seven, first reading.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ashwin Barber.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny.
Yes.
County Commissioner Hopple.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Yes.
County Commissioner, County Commissioner Faradellus, on the bottom.
Thank you, Director. I would like to remind everyone that the deadline to submit to taxes this year is Monday, April fifteenth. Preparation services are available to taxpayers with low and moderate incomes, with a special attention to those aged, sixty, and older. Services are available person, virtual, or both. Please call the Office of Aging and Disabled Services, or visit the county website for more information. As part of the county behavioral health initiative, on April first, the county introduced behavioral health navigators. The navigators can connect residents in need with those that can help most. Navigators focus on areas of services such as mental health, support, addition and recovery, housing and food security, as well as youth services and programs. To get in touch with the navigator, please call seven three two, seven four five, three eight one zero, and that concludes our report, Director.
Thank you. Commissioner Charlie Ken.
Nothing tonight, Director. Thank you.
Commissioner Leslie Hopple.
Thank you, Director. Tonight, we have to discuss milestones in our ongoing commitment to educational excellence within Middlesex County. We're introducing three key bond ordinances, numbered four seventy-four, four seventy-five, and four seventy-six, which collectively signify our set steadfast dedication to enhancing our educational institutions. These ordinances are not just numbers, they represent a substantial investment of over twelve point million dollars in the current year, part of broader strategy that has led to an extraordinary total of seventy-one point six million dollars over the last five years. This funding has been directed toward modernizing, modernizing and improving facilities, curricula, and overall student experience across our various Baptist schools and Middlesex college campuses. Also note, bond ordinance four seventy-seven, appropriating, appropriating forty-seven million dollars for a given Baptist school as well. Our ability to make such a practical investment stems from our prudent financial management, underscored by our triple A credit rating. This prestigious rating is not just an accolade, but a tangible benefit for our taxpayers, as it enables us to issue bonds at exceptionally low interest rates, thereby maximizing the value of every dollar we allocate to education. I want to thank my fellow Commissioners, our dedicated staff, and the community for their support and trust in our endeavors. Together, we're building an educational legacy that will benefit future generations. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Director.
Thank you. Commissioner Charlie Tamara.
Thank you, Director. We're getting ready to raise the curtain on another wonderful season that plays a part, and we want you to make sure you don't miss your chance to audition, so get those dancing shoes ready and your voices tuned up. You could be the next star in one of our shows this summer, Do the Beats, In the Heights, and the Funny Thing Happen on the Way to the Forum. Open pool auditions are being held this weekend at the most famous theater in Middlesex County, Rose Rock Park, in Edison. More information and details on auditions and information on the summer season can be found on our website. First volunteer event for youth commencement corps is next week, Saturday, April thirteenth, at Renton Bay Waterfront, Arkansas, in Amboy Center. Join us for this annual Spring and Beach Suite and Clean Ocean Action from nine AM to twelve noon. Volunteers will help calm the shoreline of the Renton Bay to help keep our shores beautiful and debris free. I hope you can join us for this worthwhile event. And spring is officially here, so you guys, so you may have summer barbecue, birthday parties, family reunions on your mind. Reservations are now being accepted on the twenty twenty-four season, which runs from April thirteenth to October thirtieth. All reservations are being done on our electronic reservation system, and you can check availability, review the facilities of each park, and booking reservations. That concludes my report, Director.
Thank you. Mr. Kelso, any resolutions to be added? Have there been resolutions to be amended? Have there been resolutions to be held? This time I open up the meeting to the public, have any resolutions listed on me? State name and address say you have five minutes to speak on resolutions.
Good evening, everyone. Charlie Crabbell, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. Let's start with, I think it's the first resolution here on page three, appointment to the Middlesex County Utilities Authority. Can you tell me which seat this is for, who previously held the seat?
I believe that was Mr. Ted Light.
Thank you. And I see the appointee is Gabrielle Cahill. Can you tell me what her qualifications are for this position?
I think that she's very qualified, and we interviewed her, and we saw her resume, and felt that she could be a compliment to that, to that authority.
Are there any specific items that you feel qualifies her? What, what experience?
I think she has a lot of civic engagement, she's a councilwoman in Piscataway, and I think her heart's in the right place to do the right thing for Middlesex County.
See, I have a bachelor's degree in undergrad, and I think a master's, um, Georgia City.
Okay. Move on to page four at the very top, the lease agreement between the county of Middlesex and the Middlesex College.
Which one?
Uh, the very top, four thirty-four. Can somebody tell me, this is, it says it's for the strategic investment plan improvements on the college campus, uh, what property are we talking about here, and what improvements?
This is the, the property that's close to, to, uh, Woodbridge Avenue, uh, this will be, be where the, uh, multipurpose stadium will be, the new student center, and parking and landscaping and park areas along that front.
Okay.
And, and the purpose of the lease is to provide the access for the construction facilities between the county and the college.
And how long is the lease for?
Well, we, we have it for term through August, uh, two thousand twenty-six, because that's the anticipated timeframe in which those facilities will be constructed, but obviously, as we get into the construction period, that can be adjusted, uh, either shorter or longer.
And this C I O strategic investment plan, is that plan finalized, or is that still a draft?
Specifically, I don't know what plan reflected in the package, I believe that's a big development, I thought, relative to both the, whatever, the stadium, the student center, uh, inclusive of the sports complex, and also the library school, so from that perspective, the, the, the key projects will be taken place off the scale.
I thought I had to ask a simple question, is the plan finalized or not? Is it, is it a yes or no, is it finalized, or is it still a draft?
I think it can still be adjusted if, if conditions change.
Listen, it's a dynamic, listen, it's a dynamic, if I understand the question, it's a dynamic project in that it defines what projects are to be done as we move forward with the implementation. If there's changes that need to be taken place, then the document will be updated. Uh, but at this point in time, it does reflect the key, uh, investment projects, I think, and blessed outside.
And how many acres are we talking about in the lease?
If you're talking about the overall site, uh, there, again, there's two specific sites, one is where the Edison Park is, and the other part is where, where the, in the, on the college campus, the overall on the college campus is over a hundred acres, but that's not only the development, that's the overall site.
Right. Has there been, sorry, has there been?
Say the same thing with the Edison Park area, whole area is over a hundred and fifty acres, but the park itself, that's being improved, it's about like acres.
Has there been an environmental assessment?
Oh, yes.
It's done, is that available to the public?
Uh, I don't, I don't know that it's been finalized yet, are you talking, which site are you talking?
Uh, I'm talking about, uh, what the Park Service was asking for, National Park Service wanted, uh, E A, you know?
It was that the, the E A has been finalized in draft, and has been presented to the National Park Service, they're in the process of reviewing that, so that is in the draft form, because until it's, until we get comments back, then we can't be filed.
Okay, and then I'll move to page nine, four seventy-six, this is a five point, almost five point eight million dollar contract with A D Comm for professional services related to the multipurpose community venue, uh, and student center, is that the same thing we're talking about here, the, the multipurpose community venues, the stadium?
That's correct.
Okay, and this is actually the increase now to an amount, not to a C six point six million to this one company? What are we getting for that?
A D Comm's providing a global program manager over the entire twenty, which is very comprehensive, uh, and so, as a program manager, and as a complete designer, you have those, of course, associated providing the service over the next twenty-four years.
I believe my time has expired.
Anyone else in the public?
Second.
On the paper?
Aye.
Close. Motion to carry it. Anyone have to vote separately on anything?
I think, Director.
Okay. Twenty-four, four forty-five. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Kelso?
Yes, Director, a motion would then be in order to adopt consent agenda consisting of resolution numbers twenty-four dash four three two, to resolution twenty-four dash five oh six, excluding resolution twenty-four dash four four five, to be voted on.
So a motion to adopt, did you consent agenda?
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ashwin Barber.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny.
Yes.
County Commissioner Hopple.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes. Now, Director, we appropriately consider that resolution excluded by Commissioner Kenny and as to resolution twenty-four dash four three two.
So a motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ashwin Barber.
Yes.
County Commissioner.
Present, no vote.
County Commissioner Hopple.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes. This time I open up the meeting to the public.
Good evening, once again, Charlie Crabbell, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I wanted to follow up on that company we just talked about, A D Comm, and, uh, draw your attention to a news article published by N J Advanced Media, NJ dot com, it's called, "N J Was Once Heralded For Its Tough Pay-to-Play Laws, Not Anymore." And I wanted to read just an excerpt of the article that really jumped out at me, gave me a philosophical concern, so, um, this is related to a state law called the Elections Transparency Act, that, uh, basically overhauled the entire, uh, pay-to-play regulatory system for New Jersey, and so, quote, "With the new law, more than a hundred and fifty contractors or their executives contributed in twenty twenty-three to political parties," dot, 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 "The biggest beneficiary was the Middlesex County Democratic Organization, which got more than two hundred eighty thousand dollars from contractors." That included the largest check, a fifty thousand dollar contribution from A D Comm, a Fortune five hundred engineering firm based in Dallas, Texas. Campaign finance reports show the company made the donation on November third. Five days later, the Middlesex County Improvement Authority awarded A D Comm a seven million dollar design contract for improvements to the New Brunswick train station, dot, dot, dot. Authority Executive Director H. James Polos, who said at the November eighth meeting that the contractors competitively bid, did not respond to requests for comment, neither did the board's chairman, James P. Nolan, nor Kevin McCabe, the leader of the county Democratic Organization. A request for comment from A D Comm was also not returned. So I would like to know what you have to say about this, given that you just approved some six point six million dollars to this, uh, same company that's donated to the Middlesex County Democratic Organization. Of course, you sir are a candidate on the ballot this year, running with the support of that organization, and I wanted to ask, if everything here is above board, why is Jim Polos, Jim Nolan, and Kevin McCabe not responding to requests for comment from the state's largest news outlet? You know, this isn't one of my articles, this is NJ dot com, asking why, uh, you know, apparently, why A D Comm is at the top of this list for political donations to county parties?
I have nothing to say. No comment.
No comment?
Just what I said.
Are you soliciting political donations from A D Comm at the same time you're giving them contracts? Is somebody at the M C D O doing that?
I have no comment.
Do you think this is a good look for the officials that are involved in these multimillion dollar contractor awards to not respond, like you're doing now? Is that, is that a good look for the Democratic Organization, or the M C I A, or this board?
Charlie, the M C I A follows procurement protocols for all contracts, many in coordination with state agencies. Our procurement regulations aim to ensure that Middlesex County receives the highest quality of work and the best possible value for taxpayers. We can't speak for other people, um, or are willing to speak to the press or not, but this is what you have to understand, we have strict rules that we follow, and are followed through letter here at the M C I A.
Okay, well, maybe you could talk a little bit about A D Comm, and why you've chosen to give them, I mean, because this is a company I hadn't, you know, had not done much business here in Middlesex County, I know they're a national or even international company, but all of a sudden, they are getting huge contracts, not just the New Brunswick train station, which was the topic of this article, but now tonight, this stadium, they're apparently in the driver's seat, in a, a key planning position, making more millions and millions of taxpayer dollars for this stadium, that is, you know, your, your pet project, why'd you select A D Comm? What factors led you to pick them?
They're like any other engineer, that if the engineering that they do, people feel comfortable with their professionalism and their work and their experience, and that's why they're, they're, they're chosen to, to do that project. As Mr. Kelso said, they follow the whole process like every other engineering firm.
Yeah, you, you said people, which people? Who recommended that?
Our, our engineering staff here.
Okay, and I, I just, I can't get past this, this fifty thousand dollar check, five days before, uh, you know, a big contract award. Can you explain, uh, the timing of that award, or why?
Thank you. Time's up. Anyone else in the public?
Move the votes, probably, for us. Second.
On the paper? I propose, motion to carry it, and then one for the chairman.
Second.
On the paper?
Aye.
Close, motion carried, we're adjourned.